Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Camden Advisory Board of Education.
Good evening. The regular notice requirement of the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act has been complied with, and that adequate advance notice of this meeting was given at least 48 hours in advance. On June 18th, 2014, notice was mailed to the Courier Post in Aldea. Notice was also posted on a bulletin board located by the reception desk at the central office and all school building bulletin boards within the district. Mr. Ober, phone call please.
Ms. Atwood. Mr. Mr. Burrito. Ms. Burley. Ms. Coscarello. Ms. Vanir. Mr. Mohammed.
Present.
Ms. Reyes Morton. Ms. Wilson.
Present.
Ms. Blackshear.
Excuse.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. Would everyone please join me in this salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will go into executive sessions. Mr. Ober.
Do we have a motion to go into executive?
Second.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. We're in executive session.
We need to explain to the public why we'll be in executive session.
We're going into executive session for labor negotiations, real estate personnel, and student matters.
Thank you.
And we should be returning at 6:30.
I will entertain a motion to come out of close.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. It's unanimous, you're out of closed session.
Thank you. At this time, we will have any presentations or announcements?
So we're going to begin by inducting our student advisory board members, and Bryant Horsley is going to help with that.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand. Say your full name.
Please repeat after me. I affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people. I affirm that I possess the qualifications for the office of student board representative and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
I'd just like to announce to the board, this evening we will be functioning under the Robert rules of order, so before any of you, when you have a question, raise your hand so that I can acknowledge you. Thank you. At this time, we will turn this portion over to Superintendent Rohanofar.
Great, so the screen's going to come down, which means, well, it looks like the students are already on their way down, so. Good evening, everyone. Good evening. So, before we go into the presentation, can everyone hear me okay? Okay. I want to begin by thanking our teachers and administrators. Most of you are probably aware that today is a professional development day where we focused on the importance of using data to inform and differentiate instruction to support our students. And I sat in Woodrow Wilson's morning workshop and just wanted to share with you all, I was tremendously impressed with the staff there, they were engaged, they were enthused. It's a very different environment in that school building today when compared to last year, and the staff members there, to a person, demonstrated great critical thinking as it relates to ways we can better differentiate instruction for our students. So I want to just thank all of our teachers and administrators. I'd also like to begin by acknowledging a few issues and concerns that have been raised by our student advisory board members. They continue to serve as important ambassadors to the district as far as representing their respective school communities. And I'll tell you that in our conversations, they've bubbled up concerns that in many instances we've been able to address. So, for example, Camden High, we heard from our two advisory reps there, advisory board reps there, that the lines were too long in the cafeteria, and at times lunches were overcrowded, and we were able to address that through better scheduling. We heard that students were having trouble accessing internet in that building, and we were able to find the accessible use policy forms, the AUP forms, to ensure that they had access. But we're still working through some challenges. And I often acknowledge many of the district's successes here in this forum, and will certainly continue to highlight those successes going forward. But it's also my responsibility to be open and honest with you all when things aren't working as well as they should be. So, for example, I can tell you that at Camden High School, we've had some concerns, understandable concerns, that lockers have not yet been assigned to the students there. And Principal Thompson's focus has been on establishing culture and climate and improving the quality of the instruction and support to staff. But nonetheless, those lockers should have been assigned by now, and by the end of next week, our commitment is, no later than the end of next week, we will assign those lockers to our students. And that, again, is a concern that we've heard directly from our students and from some family members as well. We continue to have regular conversations with our family members, and I want to, again, raise some issues and concerns that we're continuing to grapple with in a handful of our schools. At Cream Family School, we've heard from a number of parents that the behavior policies are too strict. And we've been quite clear in our conversations here in the board meetings that we're moving away from punitive behavior policies towards restorative justice practices. And so when we hear that too many students are being affected by punitive policies, that's a huge concern for us. My responsibility is to ensure that we provide this safety net, that where there are issues, we help resolve them. At the same time, we want to make sure that our principals and staff are empowered to lead their schools. But I can tell you that as a result of this feedback, we're going to hold a family meeting at Cream, whether it's later this week or next week, to hear out those concerns with the principal and ensure that we can address them in a timely manner. At Forest Hill, we heard concerns that the entire eighth grade class was suspended. And it turns out that it wasn't the entire eighth grade class, but the eighth grade class was very small. It was seven students, but seven out of that entire eighth grade class is still a big number. They weren't suspended, it was a do not admit, meaning that those students were disciplined and were asked to show up at school the next day with a parent or guardian. And we worked closely with some community members and leaders who are here today to be able to resolve that issue, and I want to thank them for their advocacy and their support. So again, we're not perfect at every turn. Where there are issues, we will look to address them as quickly as we can, and always be mindful of ultimately finding systemic solutions, so we're not always playing whack-a-mole. Other times, those types of issues that come up arise due to miscommunication. And we will continue to strive to get the right information to community members as quickly and clearly as we can. So for today's agenda, we just did the advisory board inductions there. We are going to talk through a number of district updates, and I want to first begin by talking through our quarterly Camden Commitment Progress Report. We made a public commitment when we announced our strategic plan that every three months we would tell you how we're doing. And these updates just serve to reflect various initiatives that are underway. So as it relates to our first two promises on student safety, we're excited to report that more than 700 Safe Corridor Maps have been distributed to families throughout the community, and every school has it posted in a visible location near the entrance. For improving the state of our facilities and the technology in those facilities, we have now delivered 4,800 laptops to schools. So we made a commitment to deploy a large number of laptops to schools, and just this week, approximately 480 of them were distributed to staff and to students. For student support and better quality instruction, we actually have a guest with us today that's going to talk about one of our pilot programs, Positive Behavior Support in Schools, Ms. Rosen from H.B. Wilson, you'll hear from her in a moment, and that's one of the initiatives underway. We've also partnered with City Hall for a youth justice forum, which is really intended to provide peer-to-peer mentoring, so students meet with one another to troubleshoot issues and provide, really, an early intervention for high school students who are at the risk of dropping out. For better quality instruction and overall teaching and learning, we continue to work hard to provide one-to-one instructional coaching for all of our school leaders, and we've supported all of our principals through twice monthly coaching sessions, as we've discussed here before. For service to families, we've had a number of announcements for those of you that haven't been able to catch up with some of the news as reported by our local publications here. We, first of all, want to highlight the community school coordinators. Not every school has had a community school coordinator here in the district for a very long time, and we prioritize that in our budget, and we hired 11 community school coordinators over the course of the summer and this school year, so that every school now has a community school coordinator. And that is critical, in that those community school coordinators are connective tissue with family members and the rest of the community. And in meeting families where they are so that they can better support their students, we need those staff members who have roots in the community, who have relationships in the community, and help us do that really important work. We also provided translation equipment at all large public meetings, this meeting, of course, being included. And that was another investment we made to, again, meet families where they are and ensure that we can properly communicate with them. And then lastly, for central office effectiveness, for the first week of the school year, where it's obviously a really busy time, a number of families are showing up, enrolling their students, a number of issues come up during that first week, we were able to respond to all issues that came within at least three days of having received those issues. In some cases, we resolved them in the moment, in other cases, we certainly did the follow-up work. And then would also add that we're trying to provide better professional development for our central office staff. Another announcement that was recently reported in the news, and for those of you that missed it, this is significant for our students, and if our students haven't heard this, I'm glad that we'll be able to first have this conversation here today, which is a new ambulatory care partnership. It's an apprenticeship program for 15 students, 15 high school students. And we talk a lot about how students should have a choice as to whether or not they will enlist in a two-year college program, a four-year college program, or enlist into the workforce. And this is an opportunity that allows them to focus on real opportunities in the workforce locally. And so this partnership is with Rutgers University, Rowan University, and Camden County College in order to provide a program to give students an opportunity to apprentice in ambulatory care. So the work is part clinical, part clerical, and we are working with the Coalition of Healthcare Providers founded by Dr. Jeff Brenner. And so beginning this winter, we're going to kick off a recruitment process to find those 15 students. And in our next board meeting, we're actually going to invite some representatives to talk about it in more detail. And this is one of many efforts to ensure that students have those opportunities to enlist into the workforce here locally. We've heard a lot of questions and concerns from students sticking with that theme, and also from our educators about PARC. So Common Core, being part of New Jersey statute now, it's, PARC is the test that assures that what we're providing as far as instruction goes, it's being assessed properly. Now, the PARC examination, there's a lot of bad information out there about when the test is official. So I wanted to just be really clear about this, because for this school year, the HESPA and ASA tests, which are the traditional high school examinations, are still in effect. In spring of next year, in spring of 2015, PARC will be administered. However, it is a no-stakes test. Let me say that again, there are no stakes in the PARC test this year. And in fact, that's also the case in ensuing years, I'm going to get to that in a moment. So as you see here in the box at the bottom of this slide, although high school students will be taking PARC this spring, the use of PARC as a graduation requirement will be phased in over time. So here's what that means. So current on-track seniors need to pass HESPA or ASA, or they can graduate through an appeals process, and many of our students graduate through the appeals process. For 2015, 16, and then the following two years, so on-track juniors, sophomore, and freshman, PARC is still not the test. What they can also do in order to graduate is they can get a minimum of a 400 on reading or math on the SAT, a minimum of 16 on reading and math for the ACT, and you see the other exams there which are not as widely taken, Accuplacer maybe a little bit more so than the military test. And they can also graduate through the appeals process. So point being, nothing really changes for the ensuing three years. It's only until you get to 2018, 19, our current eighth graders, where by the time they're in high school, they would be taking the PARC examination as a graduation requirement. So I just want to be abundantly clear about that, because a lot of students rightfully were confused about this. When the state announced this, there was a lot of confusion, so I just want to make sure at the local level we're communicating this effectively, that the PARC test is not a requirement for graduation until 2018, 2019. Just a few district highlights. We were announced by advocates for children of New Jersey, the New Jersey chapter, that we were one of the top 15 programs as it relates to school breakfast. They've shown studies that breakfast after the bell improves the quality of instruction and student engagement, and we were ranked 13th in the entire state, which is certainly very exciting, given there are over 600 school districts in the state of New Jersey. I mentioned this earlier, as far as the deployment of the laptops, so as you can see here, we have six schools, Dudley Creative Arts, Molina, Sumner, Cato, and Sharp have received their laptops, with other schools set to receive their shipments as well. I mentioned the community school coordinators, there was an article in Philadelphia Inquirer about this, a couple of our community school coordinators were highlighted there, the CSC Veterans Memorial School, Clayton Gonzalez is actually an alumnus of vets, and also our CSC US Wiggins, they were both highlighted in the article, both are new hires, and again, 11 new community school coordinators have been hired to, again, provide better support to our families. I mentioned positive behavior support in schools. We are now implementing this program with 30 teachers across five schools, and it's my pleasure to be able to introduce to you all Ms. Rosen, who is an elementary teacher at H.B. Wilson, and she's going to tell you a little bit about the program that she's leading there.
Excuse me, for the good of the order, I've heard a lot of cell phones going off. Would you please, please, put your cell phones on, off, or vibrate? Thank you.
Thank you to the superintendent and the board for allowing me to speak about this very exciting opportunity for our staff and students. PBSIS is a multi-tiered framework. What I mean by this is that the research has shown us that 80% of our students currently do well and respond to the expectations that we set in our school. The other 20% of our students need more specific interventions that are tailored to their needs. Knowing these stats allows us to anticipate the range of needs and enables us to be seamless with our interventions. Basically, it helps us to plan, to be systematic, and allows us to put things in place ahead of time, because we can predict that there will be children who need more specific interventions. We are moving away from punitive interventions towards a more restorative approach. Our main goal is to reinforce pro-social behaviors and make sure that our instructional time is used for instructional purposes, and not to take the precious time away from our students to deal with challenging types of behaviors. We want to be proactive and not reactive. Instead of suspensions, we are thinking in advance of ways to prevent problem behaviors prior to them even occurring. PBSIS has enabled H.B., Wilson, Vets, Cream, and Wiggins to rethink the way that we handle challenging behaviors and develop a more pro-social and proactive school-wide plan. Specifically, at my school, H.B., our four overarching expectations are be respectful, be responsible, be safe, be on time. These are posted throughout the entire building. We then have specific expectations for each area of the building, such, for example, the cafeteria and the gym. Thanks to Principal Jenna Johnson, who has embraced the culture change and has supported our team, H.B. is set to roll out our school-wide implementation come January 2015, with a full school store appropriately named the Scholar Dollar Store, where students will be able to purchase items using the dollars that they receive for displaying these four expectations. The school-wide implementation goes beyond the teachers and the paraprofessionals who interact with our students. It extends to the office staff, the cafeteria, a maintenance crew, and after-school program employees. Everybody will be on board and will be involved. To give you an idea of what the four expectations are in a classroom environment, I would like to speak about the implementation and positive changes that have occurred already in my classroom. After introducing the expectations, we created specific situations of what each of these expectations is like, and we had our students role-play examples and non-examples. Once they had a firm grip of the expectations, I implemented a three-response abilities chart. So I took one of our four expectations and we made a chart out of it. The students earn a star every day for three things, being dressed in uniform, having their homework, and their backpack. In addition, students who are absent only receive a star if I either have a note or phone call from the parent or a doctor's note. Then, for every five stars, the students are allowed to choose a prize from the classroom Scholar Store. Within days of incorporating this, I had students telling me about upcoming appointments, they had days ahead of time, and had already received tons of phone calls and doctor's notes for over 95% of the absences, and have had 100% uniform compliance. The numbers look good, the research is even better, and we are all extremely excited for our future with PBSIS in our school district. Lastly, I would like to thank the school district for allowing me to partake in the upcoming PBSIS conference in Chicago at the end of this month. I'm extremely excited to see what the other schools across our nation are doing and bring back a wealth of information to our school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosen, really appreciate that. So moving along here. Enterovirus has certainly raised some concerns across the district, and some of you may have heard that there was recently a very unfortunate death in South Jersey of a student with enterovirus, so I wanted to make sure that we all were aware of the various outlets and information to make sure that we understand what's happening and what the precautionary measures are. So it's my pleasure to be able to introduce our head of Health Services, Renee Wickerstein, who's going to talk to you a little bit about the information that we have available for all students and families.
Good evening. I just want to go over a couple of things that we have done in the district. And the main thing to avoid the enteroviruses, wash your hands with soap and water. So I'm going to say that a lot tonight, because that's basically what you can do to protect yourselves. What we have done on September 18th, this actually went out to the nurses and the principal, actually it wasn't a poster like this, it was bullets from the Camden County Board of Health. On September 19th, the same thing went out to the principals in their weekly newsletter. Basically, the New Jersey Department of Health Advisory was delivered to all the schools to be backpacked home with the students, so the students should have brought this home. The Camden County SD, the school district, has developed a, we did a YouTube, basically an advertisement, a public service announcement, and that was taped on October 8th, and that was frequently asked questions about enterovirus. And you can access that on the YouTube channel, CCSD TV. Families can access the YouTube channel by searching CCSD on YouTube, and there's also a link on the district's homepage. Information has been sent home to school-based staff and nurses, schools have been instructed to post informational materials in areas accessible to staff and students. This actually went out again on October 16th to the nurses, and I encouraged them all to do a bulletin board. Some nurses don't have that access, but they, to put that information out for everyone. Although we have taken the precautions, we're urging everyone to be calm and cautious rather than to be alarmed despite the extreme and fatal cases. So far, in New Jersey, there was the one young man. Today, on the way over here, I actually heard that there was a second child in that student's classroom who was actually tested for the enterovirus, and he was tested negative, so the second child never had it in that same classroom up in Mercer County, which is actually great news. I talked to the Board of Health on Friday, and Mary Ann Rahman told me that there were zero cases in Camden County, and that to be positive, you actually have to have the blood test, and that would have to come back from the CDC. So far, that has not happened. No one has become positive. And basically, the New Jersey Department of Health has said that the best way, and the CDC, is to reduce the chance of spreading it, is through, you guessed it, wash your hands with soap and water. One of the problems is that it's spread through your hands, and when you're sneezing, we have taught the children to sneeze into their elbow, and they pretty much will do that, you'll see that in the classrooms all the time. And the smaller children with asthma, they're particularly vulnerable. But to help the immune system, we would encourage extra sleep, eight to 10 hours a night, drink water, eat a well-rounded meal, and keep to up-to-date with your immunizations. So, basically, clean, and the district has done that. Any questions? We're good? Yes. The district, we can't do anything for your child other than have them wash their hands with soap and water, so I'm not sure. I'm sorry, from you having it?
How do I know that the school is making sure my child's hands is washed?
Because we provide soap in the bathrooms and water in the bathrooms. Well, I'm not sure what else you would like me to do.
I'm not comfortable in knowing that the teacher is making sure my child wash their hands. I have a child that's, I believe the teacher knows she loves him, she was learning that sometimes I might just turn and I'll say, "Hey, how am I assured that she's making sure my child washes her hands?" When I have a child that's my mother.
So we had just talked about having a family meeting tomorrow afternoon, so maybe this is, tomorrow at Hatch, so maybe this is an issue we can discuss in more detail about your child-specific schooling teachers and have that conversation more locally. Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wickerstein. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Just to close out the presentation, I just want to shout a few last district highlights here. Some of you may remember at our last board meeting, there was, there were a couple individuals who came from an organization representing the canoe-mobile effort, which they encouraged us to participate in, and we followed up. It's actually free to the district, and we had 150 students from Cooper's Point, Wiggins, and Brim Medical Arts participate, and they, this is really a first of its kind for the school district as far as I've been made aware. In the past, the district hasn't allowed trips on water, and so we, of course, followed all precautionary measures, and the students were able to explore the Delaware River, and so they were able to absorb aquatic species, test the quality of the water, learn about the history and culture of the Delaware River and the city itself. So it was a neat trip. We got a lot of positive feedback from our students. I'm on the wrong slide here, as you can see, but these are the pictures of the event itself. We also had an event where we planted 140 trees in Stockton Park and Morgan Village, and it was in partnership with TD Bank and the New Jersey Tree Foundation. And the picture here that you can see are students from Caddo in Stockton Park. So I want to thank all of our students and staff who participated in that. There was a wonderful parade where Woodrow Wilson High School's JRTC program participated. It was organized by the Elks Organization, and that happened just the other weekend. And other good news, Camden High's football team is now 6-0, and the marching band won a big award just recently. They placed first at the Howard University Showcase of Bands, which is a significant accomplishment. Give them a round of applause. We had a fireside chat here. I think a number of the people who are attending today were also at that event. We had 50 or so parents and a number of other community members and staff members present, and I thought it was a good conversation. And I believe this is the last slide, second last, to raise an initiative coming out of Sumner School where their students created a garden, and we got a lot of positive feedback from that school community. And lastly, before we announce retirements, I want to acknowledge that the Cooper's Point community came together with President Farmer from Camden Education Association and some of his team members, Lisa Hardrick most notably, to honor the former president of the Camden Education Association, Delaiver Harvey. It was a wonderful ceremony. I was able to participate. I want to thank again President Farmer and the Cooper's Point family for honoring Ms. Harvey. She was a longtime teacher at Cooper's Point before she came on to serve as president of the Camden Education Association. And I'll, let's give her a round of applause. And as the board members come back up on stage, actually, they're here on the corner. I'm going to let Ms. Wilson acknowledge those who are departing the district for retirement.
We'd like to acknowledge Ms. Kathleen Campbell, 27 years. Louis DiAmato, six years. Myara DiAmato, 24 years. Susan Lego, 16 years. Angela Sharp, 29 years. Parrish Taliti, 12 years. And Cheryl Washington, 30 years. The district would like to thank each and every one of them for their time served here with their children in the city of Camden, and thank each and every one of them.
Hey, Maun, is there anything else you want to move forward on your agenda?
No, that concludes the presentation.
We have our usual financial statements that we'll be approving this evening, as well as there are, I believe, 18 items on the agenda, agenda items for approval. Thank you.
This is our attorney, has anything you need to bring forward?
No.
Okay. Ms. Casarela.
Yes, item number 14. Excuse me, is the contract with Aramark the same as last year essentially? And if not, what would be the differences?
Well, the difference is there are new regulations, federal regulations, that had to be incorporated in the contract, so that's what was added.
Okay, but I mean, we're still getting $100,000 reimbursement, we're still charging the same amount per meal.
That I can't speak to.
I can respond to that. The guarantee this year is a half a million dollars. We negotiated so there would be more in the benefit of the district.
Great. And we've usually had a contract with someone to do oversight with Aramark. Do we have that, or has that been eliminated?
You approved that last month.
We don't approve.
It was approved last month. It's advocated.
It's still advocated.
And it was as a result of their efforts that we were able to get the Aramark to increase the guarantee to the district.
Great. Congratulations. Thank you. That's important.
Any other questions? At this time, Paymon.
By the powers vested in the state district superintendent under Title 18A, I hereby approve tonight's superintendent's agenda items and business agenda items.
Okay, I will now turn the rest of the meeting over to our attorneys. You did, to sign up for the questions.
So before we go into public commentary, I want to just quickly mention that we have a table outside for any issues specific to school support needs. We have some staff dedicated, so to the extent, I mean, by all means, feel free to raise those issues in public commentary, but to the extent you would like to have a conversation with a devoted staff member, we have a table set up outside.
Great. Great idea.
Rules for public comment. The Camden City School District welcomes the attendance and comments from all members of the public at its meetings. This public comment period is your time to be heard on the agenda items in this meeting. Each person who signed up to comment will have three minutes. You will be notified when your three minutes are up. You cannot yield your time to another person. When it is your turn to speak, please remain at the podium and address all of your comments to the board president or the superintendent. Please conduct yourself in a respectful and courteous manner. For anyone whose comments or actions either harass, intimidate, or threaten the safety of any person, we will provide you with a warning or immediately end your comment time. Also, if you curse, use vulgar language, or make personal attacks, we will provide you with a warning or end your comment time. We will not interrupt you during your three minutes of comments. Members of the audience should also not interrupt the speaker at the podium. If you have any questions, please ask your questions during your three-minute comment period. After the public comment period is closed, the superintendent or his designate will address your questions to the extent provided by law. Thank you for your understanding. First commenter is Loretta Gooden.
My name is Loretta Gooden, and I reside at 1212 North 33rd Street, Camden, New Jersey. I am the parent, I am the president of the District Parent Advisory Council, but I am not here as an African-American, a Caucasian, a Hispanic, an Asian, or no other culture. I am here as a parent and the president of the council with concerns. We were told that before, there was no longer a clerk at the parent's center, that we had to do our own paperwork and send it out in a timely manner. We did that. Now, you have been, which I forgot to hand you. Could you hand these papers out for me, please?
Officer McGee, you can drop them off.
I'm handing, I'm passing, or handing you out three printouts. Please look them over for a second. And I would like to bring to your attention the printout that has subject, guest speaker. And it says Wednesday, September 24th, 2014, 11:17. Guest speaker for the next District Parent Advisory Council meeting, October 9th. I'm not going to read it all, but I think this is my key point that I need. District Superintendent, Mr. Sean Gallagher, to give out information to the parents on elementary, secondary, and, I'm getting nervous, let me get it together.
It's okay.
Also, report on the new state tests. Executive Tia Moore and staff from District of Family and Community Engagement face. We would also like them to explain their program and give out handouts for parents and community. The District Parent Executive thanks you for your cooperation and support. Any further questions, please contact Loretta Gooden. Kevin Barfield, District Parent Council Secretary.
Thank you, Ms. Gooden. Your time is up.
Okay. Do I get an answer of why you didn't come, why no one came to our meeting on October?
So we don't typically go back and forth in the middle of a business meeting, but we will, I can address it after the speaker list is exhausted, and we certainly will send someone to you to have a conversation about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gooden.
All right. Well, hello. I am actually a parent. I have two at Hatch, one at Camden High and one at ECDC, and my concern was for this district calendar that we no longer receive. In this calendar, we have information that is not posted on any website that we have. So how is it that us as parents will receive this information here? This stuff is not listed on any website that we have. You can go on the Board of Education website, you can go on the separate school websites, and the information is not there. So as parents, my question is, how are we supposed to get this kind of information when we do not have this calendar anymore? And what can we do to get this calendar back in play?
So just a same thing I was saying to Ms. Gooden, that we don't typically go back and forth. I will address it at the end of the speaker list. We do have a calendar, just a very brief response. We do have a calendar. It's not as detailed as that one. We've diverted some funds to create a district newsletter in addition to a calendar, so part of this is a funding issue, but I'll give you a fuller response at the end of the speaker list. Thank you, Ms. Trent.
Thank you.
Number three, Jessica Lightfoot. Number four, Kevin Barfield.
Good evening, everyone. Superintendent, starting off last month, I requested some information, the Parks, Park Perkins Plan for the vocational program, which I didn't receive any information or feedback from the staff, the curriculum and instruction for seventh grade, and then also the high school, and also the vocational programs. Like, I know two of them that my son isn't participating in. I need that information. And so again, it's like, you know, even when we come and we give our, ask for questions, we still don't get no information and no feedback. So, you know, it's kind of discouraging to hear response to questions, and then you don't get no feedback or no action or anything takes place. And the clarity in reference to what our president was speaking about in reference to no one responding back, you know, I think that just hurt, the heartening part is that as parents in advisory groups, that we still talk about communication. And again, we feel as though we don't get the support that you promised in reference to when you went through that speaking tour, that you knew the issues and communication and barriers with parents that you said that you would rectify. So that's still a concern. Also, the concern is about technology, technology in the district and the fact that the process, whoever, the company that you have, that you outsource to that's responsible for handling any technical issues, printer setup, print, you know, computer, you know, that process is really too long. A lot of information is not getting out, you know, from staff. So, I mean, you can elaborate on that. I think that needs to be looked into. Also, I would like to know in reference to the Title I program and what is the Title I policy? You have a unified plan, because it seemed like there's no unification in parental involvement. We have nights where we have three different events all going on at the same night. There's no direction in this district. Everything is helter-skelter. So I wish you, you know, hope that you, you know, talk about that. And then other part, when we talk about all the cuts and things that take place throughout the district in reference to staff not being hired, that go-timps and things of that nature, it seemed like we're doing a lot of cutting, and we're still, you know, we still don't have the textbooks disaligned with the new standards. So again, what is going to be done about that? Because again, how can our children be prepared to take these state tests, and we still using old textbooks? That's a concern. One of the schools, Camden High, we still have an issue with, I know the biology teacher, with 38 students in a biology class. How is that supposed to happen? You know, how are they supposed to teach? So again, you know, I understand that, like you're saying, everything is a process, but again, you know, we can go months at a time, and before you know it's the end of the year, and we're still talking about, we're still working on it. You know, but in the meantime, you know, our kids are, you know, they're not staying focused, they're not being challenged with the curriculum or the lack of curriculum.
Thank you, Mr. Barfield. Your time is up.
We need some clarity on the curriculum, so I wish you would address as to how we can get that information as parents.
Number five, Beth Thomas.
Good evening. I have one purpose of standing here. I want to request a meeting with Mr. Paymon as soon as possible so that some of these can be addressed and regressed, because we also have another group of parents out there that you have not heard from, and I'm getting a little tired of them jumping me. And you must know that in a school... And you must know that in the school system, we still have grandparents and even great-grandparents out there fighting and fight, or trying to get these children educated. So, can we please get that meeting and get it as soon as possible?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Number six, Keith Benson.
The Lord is my shepherd, I shall not want. He maketh me lie down in green pastures. He leadeth me beside the still waters. He restoreth my soul. He leadeth me in the paths of righteousness for his namesake. Yea, though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I will fear no evil, for thou art with me. I read that to remind myself that the Lord is in charge and looks after me regardless how unfriendly and unfortunate a situation I find myself. Last month, a student of mine onstage, Ms. Buckley, came to represent her school's students and expressed concern for what she believes is second-class treatment the students in her school are getting by this administration and Board of Education. She explained before coming to Camden that she attended white schools and clearly expressed they are not treated the same, with, with the same disregard with which Camden children are treated. The result of her speaking up against perceived injustices for her classmates was her being labeled as a cynic, as disrespectful, and had her words twisted in such a way to make it seem as if she was talking negatively about her own principal, which was not true. All this happened by adults here. Rather than having adults supporting her for her bravery and voicing her concerns, we have, we have adults here that would rather ignore and disparage her. In fact, the day after Ms. Buckley spoke here, she came to school and cried because of the way she was treated. As her teacher, I feel it is my responsibility to support her and speak in her mind, especially in a place such as this, where I know it can be very difficult for someone to stand on their own two feet in the face of oppression. And it is Ms. Buckley, still a child, who showed more courage at last month's meeting than our Board of Education, consisting of all adults, has shown in years, and certainly more courage than any of you sitting on the Board of Education now. See what Ms. Buckley was willing to do, bring attention that our schools were understaffed, that our students are without resources, our Board of Education should have done. If our Board had any courage at all, they would have pointed those things out and addressed them first. But, Ms. Buckley was not as concerned with maintaining a temporary superficial place of comfort, relying on her silence, that she was not willing to sell out what she knows is right simply so people in power would like her a little bit more, and neither am I. As a resident and educator and Camden Public School parent, I have a deep problem that kids in some elementary schools have to earn their right to lockers, that kids in high schools still don't have computer access preventing them from applying to colleges and registering for SATs because the librarian is too overwhelmed with added technology responsibilities. I have a problem with the white privilege exhibited in hiring in this district, that as racist as Chris Christie has shown himself to be, adults on that stage still trip over themselves to be seen by his side smiling from ear to ear and laughing at all his jokes as if he were Kevin Hart. I also have a problem with the board meetings not being televised anymore, thereby keeping our community members in the dark. There are many things that deeply trouble me about this state grand district.
Thank you, Mr. Benson, your time is up.
One that I love so much and I remain committed to. But more than all the things that anger me, what is most unacceptable is the silence and complicity of the adults making up the Board of Education. You are the ones with the microphones in front of your faces, but what good is that?
Thank you, Mr. Benson, your time is up. Mr. Benson, please end your comment, your time is up. Number seven, Robert Farmer.
Good evening. Robert Farmer, president of the Camden Education Association. I just have a few, um, concern, well, there are a number of concerns, but I'm going to just, um, condense them into, try to get them in within three minutes. The first, um, the first, uh, basic question, it's not even a question, it's a statement that the security in the high schools. I've been getting calls from, uh, members that they're understaffed. I understand that the, uh, the security, the high-tech security system is, you know, working fine, but the officers are saying that they do not have enough staff to respond quickly enough when incidents, when they're told to report places, that they don't have enough officers to, um, actually get, respond in a timely manner. So, if y'all can take a look at that, maybe more, more security officers are needed. The safe corridor, it failed us last week. You know, I'd be remiss to sit up here and say that, you know, I think that should have been discussed here about, you know, there was one of our students, Camden High student, that was injured. And where was the parents, where were, uh, the police? You know, we, we said we're going to have safe corridors, we got to make sure those safe corridors are in place. Testing, uh, I, once again, I've received a lot of complaints from the members in the schools stating that the principals are pushing the MAT tests. Um, under state law, our, our, uh, members do have a right to choose their own test. Maybe, maybe later on, we can have a conversation of, you know, why, why the district is pushing that test so hard. Conversion charters, that's another thing that, you know, I, I'll be remiss if I didn't say things about. Talk to community members. They are not clear on conversion charters. They say, you know, so either the district or the schools that are conversion charter schools have not made that clear to the public of what are charter schools, conversion charter schools, and how are they determined? You know, what are their, their purpose? So, the community is, is really telling me that they have not been educated about these types of, um, schools. Lack of, uh, teaching materials I have received, I have been to some schools where the, uh, elementary teachers have said that they do not have remedial enrichment, workbooks reinforcing, you know, the skills that they're being taught. Some schools do not have teacher guides, or, you know, they say that they're receiving copies of, um, test books. Uh, you know, and I think that, that definitely has to be addressed, especially if we're, if we think that our students are going to be successful in raising test scores as well as our members.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer, your time is up.
And in closing, I'd just like to say, um, non-teacher staff has expressed their concerns of reprisal by the principals if they do not, uh, use the MAT test on their evaluation. So, um, superintendent, if you can look into that for me, I will be, um, I'll be happy. Thank you.
Number eight, Mary Kirk.
Good evening. My name is Mary Kirk. I am a grandparent, I am a business owner, and I am a mentor to the children in North Camden. Uh, first of all, I would like to know, one of my questions was answered about the school calendars. I just received this piece of paper. My other question, you know, I don't even, you know, I, this, this don't mean nothing. Okay, number two is I understand that you have, uh, hard, the school coordinators, but the problem is that they are get, finding out information at the last minute. This room should be full with parents, but I just happened to stumble up on this meeting tonight. Now, if we had our regular school calendars that we can put on the walls, that I would know these things and we can get, you know, I know a lot of people, I could bring a lot of people up in here, you know, so, because there's a lot more concerns. So, could you please handle that? I would appreciate it greatly. Thank you.
Number nine, Kelly Francis. Number 10, Jessica Franzini.
Hi, everybody. I don't want to take up too much of your time. I just want to thank you so much for supporting the canoe mobile effort. Um, as the superintendent outlined, it was really successful and engaged over 150 students from three schools, Brim, Wiggins, and Cooper's Point. That was Tuesday, October 7th, they got to canoe out on the Delaware and experience their community from a boat. Um, and the second reason I'm here is to thank you for your support of our tree planting efforts. I'll tell you, I mean, I've spoken as a guest speaker in many different classrooms throughout the state. Um, my name is Jessica and I work for the New Jersey Tree Foundation. And I went into Ms. Massantonio's third grade class here in this school and did a little quick lesson on trees so that the kids could recite a poem at our opening ceremony on October 10th. And they were extremely attentive, they listened, they were so smart, so enthusiastic, like, I have to admit, it really made me kind of emotional, because I'm so used to working with adults, that I just, I for, I just forgot how much life kids bring to an effort. So, huge compliment to, to this school and, um, to the administration for their help with that. And the second thing is that Creative Arts sent out two seniors to, um, they wrote original poetry about trees and they presented at our opening ceremony on October 17th. And the, I just am so amazed by the talent that the two girls displayed. Um, the one wrote a poem comparing her experience at the school to how a tree grows and is nurtured. And the other talked about how tough it is growing up in the city, um, in comparison to a tree whose roots are constricted and, and needs to break out. So, um, huge thank you to the district who donated mulch to our events, you made it possible for these kids to be involved, um, and we just really greatly appreciate the support.
Thank you.
Number 11, Kiana Ralph.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Kiana Ralph and I come this evening to bring glad tidings. About two, a little over two weeks ago, the Camden CROC Center, which is located in the Kramer Hill section of Camden officially opened. Uh, this, this super community center, which we call it, is what we, um, desire to be a beacon of hope and a place, a, a safe haven for our residents here in the city of Camden, our families, our kids, our children. We want them to be able to come here and experience, uh, all kinds of activities, uh, empowerment workshops for the, the parents, uh, um, just spiritual nourishment for the souls so that they can come and be able to be built up. And so, I'm here today to invite everyone here to come and check out the center. Uh, as a lifelong resident here in the city, I believe that we don't spend enough time talking about the positive things that happen, and so I wanted to make it a personal mandate to be here before you today to make sure that you knew that there are great things happening in our community. And we hope and, and pray that everyone here would take the time to acknowledge it and maybe even come out, share with your friends and your family members. Um, I do have with me today a few flyers about, um, some things that we have happening there. And particularly, I'm really excited about our, um, ability to partner with the Camden City School District to host Night at the CROC, uh, for, um, next week, for next Tuesday, October 28th, and Wednesday, October 29th, will be hosting families from the Camden School District, uh, on those two evenings, and we're really excited about it. We're going to have games, activities, food, and all kinds of fun. Um, and exci, another exciting aspect would be, uh, the opportunity for them to participate in the free drawing for, um, free membership, a free, a free family membership to our center. And so, we really do hope that you take the time to spread the word. I will ask, if it's okay with you, I will leave some information out at the security desk, so maybe people can pick it up on their way out this evening, or feel free to contact us or check us out and we'll make sure that you receive some of these flyers. But, again, I just want to make sure that you're aware of the positive things going on in our community and that you know that we are officially open for business. So, um, come check us out, thank you.
Thanks, Kiana.
For anyone who hasn't visited the CROC Center yet, you should, it's, it's absolutely spectacular.
Number 12, Gary Frazier.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Okay, so I have a few concerns, um, from speaking to some of the parents in the community. And one of them was concerning textbooks inside a cream school. Um, some of the parents, they're very upset that there are no textbooks in that school, so we would like to have a conversation in reference to that. I would also, um, request to this body that we get more information about the safe corridors program, some sort of flyers or something that we could distribute into the community to broaden that. Also, Hatch has no library or librarian. They have no speech therapist, no literacy teacher for sixth, seventh, or eighth grade, no subs for literacy. Those were some issues too, that we would like to, um, find out about. Also, would like to know the number of vacancies still left inside of the district. Cause it is, it is our understanding that teachers are being offered positions and they're leaving from their current position and, you know, going on inside the district. So, we would like a count on what the total vacancies are in the district. Um, also, New Jersey, NJAC 6A 13 dash 3.2 outlines specifics about classroom size. It is our understanding that there is an immense amount of classroom, um, classrooms are oversized. Now, and if that is the case, there's a clear violation. It clearly stipulates here that class got, class size in school districts, of which 40% or more of the students are at risk, as defined in PL 2007-C 260, which states that it should not exceed 21 students in grades kindergarten through third, 23 in grades four and five, and 24 students in grade six through 12, provided that if the district chooses to maintain lower class in grades fourth and fifth, it may equal but not exceed 25. So, we would like some answers in regards to that as well. We will be, um, entertaining our rights with our parents who are in the district to go around to these, to these schools to find out if that is in fact happening. And I can assure you, if that is happening, we will entertain litigation against this body. Um, lastly, um, it is our understanding that K through second is only testing in math. And if that is the understanding, then we want some clarity on this in regards to why you are not exercising this at an earlier stage and, um, before the, um, getting actually to that. So, that is, um, one of my concerns as well. I do, I do say to this body that we do want more information in regards to the safe corridors program. We do see it on the Camden School District site, but we need to get it out to the community. So, we would, again, ask for this body to provide us with more information that we might be able to provide to the community. Thank you.
Number 13, Tyann Horsey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm a parent and a grandparent and one of the second teachers that toured at BPAM Child Development Centers. And my concern is, why is it that Forest Hill, they had a library and they're going to make that into a cafeteria? My other concern is that at Hatch, when the parents come to meet with the principal, Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays from 8 to 9, some of the parents are working, then the principal, she doesn't want to meet with the parents and she refers them over to Mr. Aggie, the art teachers. Some of the parents don't want to talk to the art teacher, they want to talk to the principal. That's my main concern. And back to Hatch, um, there's no music teacher. The math teacher has sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, that's three levels of classes, and then no inclusion, um, class. So, if you can answer that question, I will see you tomorrow at 3 o'clock at Hatch. Thank you.
Number 14, Monique Ragstale.
Good evening. Thank God some of y'all addressed some of these things. I didn't know how I was going to get it in three minutes. But in addition to that agenda, there was also no paperwork handed out for the school year. Emergency cars for the kids, you know, some of the waivers for photos, our rules and regulations. We had uniform changes. There was, some of the parents wasn't notified. Also, agenda books. You guys didn't do agenda books for the elementary. That's how the parent and the teacher communicate with their homework assignments. They go in there, they look at their child's book and they signed it to see what their assignments are for the day. That wasn't given out this year as well. I also had an update on vacancies. Somebody got that one for me. The frequent rotation of subs. A lot of our students wants to know how would their grades be affected. They have different subs coming in daily and weekly. This is about to be the mark of the end of the first marking period. And they're going to, they want to know what's going to happen to their grades, if it's going to affect their GPAs. Also, parent teacher conference. The second marking period ends March 5th, but you have it, the parent teacher conference scheduled 4/27 and 4/28. So, by May of next week, they only have one month. So, if a child is in danger of slipping a grade or two and they need time to make it up, they won't be able to because June is mostly testing. So, I wanted to know if they can go and revise that date for parent teacher night. That's very important because if you want to catch a child who's maybe slipping their grades, you want to make sure that they can be on top of and make up some work or whatever. Also, I had a question. Somebody mentioned the math testing. But the students this year were doing the PSATs, technology. Most of the programs shut down on them, so not even all the students had a chance to work on them. Some of the underclassmen and the classmates who were supposed to take that. And many students couldn't take it because of the technology. Now, we were supposed to be working on for affordable technology, for everything to be working in our school. Here we is with $1.4 million in security. We can see everything, but we can't work with nothing. Also, for transportation, there's been a change in the transportation. A lot of parents from our meeting last night was complaining about transportation. I heard that you guys accommodated some of the Met E students. If you're going to accommodate Met E students, can you please accommodate all students in the district? And one more thing. Oh, I called the Front Street office several times. I wanted to know if my number was blocked because it hangs up on me. So, can you get a live operator or something on there because I can't get through? And the locker rooms, not only at Cream, we still don't have assigned locker rooms for our high school either. And I think that's very important if you want the kids to be able to go through their classes and protect some of their things. They need their lockers and that should be something that's addressed. And I think I got everything I'm trying to skip over. Oh, last but not least, for the resolutions and when this district decides to do shared services and bring programs in, I would like to have an opportunity to look at it to see if we can have a Q and A or something on it before it is voted on and then passed. And that's it.
Number 15, Arnold Davis.
Good evening. How you doing? There's a couple of things I just want to bring to the attention of the superintendent that was brought to my attention over the last couple of days, that there was a computer literacy coach at Cream Elementary School and that that teacher was taken out of that class and they were assigned to do map testing. They put a substitute in that class that's not qualified to teach computers. And from what I understand, a fight broke out in that room, a very brutal fight. And the substitute teacher just stood there and cried the entire time. Another teacher had to come over to the room to help break the fight up. So, I just want you guys to look into that and to see what's going on with that. Another thing, supposedly the principal at Cream took a page out of the charter school book and now kids who are being disciplined are losing their lockers. So, since taxpayers are paying for those lockers and paying for the school system, the principal doesn't have a right to tell students who can have a locker based upon their behavior. They can't carry books around all day. So, I want you guys to look into that and to see what's going on with that. Then last month, I got a call while I was shopping in the middle of the day from the students at Cream and some of them were saying that they were at the 9/11 memorial in New York and that the school system hadn't paid the bill so they couldn't get in. So, you had two buses of kids that were at the, you know, at the 9/11 museum that couldn't get in. They were rejected access, so those buses had to go back to Cream and the kids actually never got a chance. So, when I called down to the board in the middle of the day to see what was going on, nobody picked up. Someone from the Department of Human Capital finally picked up, said they were walking up to the superintendent's office to find out what happened. But, I mean, that's very embarrassing on the school system and you guys should never allow that to happen. Another thing I want to address, and just saying this, you know, there's something called karma. I'm afraid to do evil. I don't do evil to people or anything. I fear God. And some of the decisions that are made on this board is apparent that not everybody up there fears God. I'm afraid, you know, what goes around comes around. And I think it's apparent to everyone that has half of a gnat's brain that the charter school and the Renaissance movement is really not about educating these kids. It's really about an opportunity for certain individuals to make money. And I think that when it's all said and done, the Renaissance movement, the charter school movement, it's going to come back and bite a bunch of people in the butt like a rottweiler. It's not going to be a pleasant experience. Every decision you make up there, you're holding the power right now. Every decision you make up there, you have to make it for the best interest of the kids. You know, I fear God. I don't fear evil people. I just don't. They don't scare me. You know, I mean, what's the worst they can do to me? Off me? Fine. But there's still somebody else that'll come along behind me and take up the banner and speak on behalf of the people of the community. So, I'm fearing God tonight. I'm not fearing evil. All right? And there's a lot of people who have spoken up that are coming up missing and they're blaming suicide. Everybody not committing suicide. So, I just want people to know, if I come up missing and somebody said Arnold Davis committed suicide, they lifted all 360 pounds of me up into the noose because I ain't committing suicide now.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Your time is up.
Thank you. Have a nice day. But do me a favor. Please check in for that, okay?
Number 16, Sarah Jocelyn.
I'm Sarah Jocelyn. I'm a United Methodist woman and member of Church Women United. I wanted to speak to the board first to remind you that this week, October 20th to 24th, is New Jersey Youth Violence Awareness Week. I wanted to comment, of course, on the presentation of the PBSIS, which I think is a very positive thing being done in the schools. Hopefully, this will get implemented more broadly. We haven't seen a timeline for that. This is one of the programs that is under the Camden City Forum Youth Violence Prevention Strategic Plan of August 2013. The school district is a member of that plan or a co-participant of that plan. I'm asking the board if you are conducting regular meetings to update the required metrics for that plan and the activities that you're responsible for. There are at least quarterly executive meetings that are required for the entire group to have an overview. So, I'm wondering whether that's on track. I did want to also follow up on Ms. Buckley's comments from last month. I was in attendance at this meeting and I heard her passionate comments. And of course, after the meeting, I did also talk to the superintendent about that. So, there was support for Ms. Buckley on her concerns. I would ask for a follow-up. We did not receive a response. Last month, there were 3% open positions. We received no update this month. 3% was across the district. We heard no update on the open positions that are in the high schools. And that's something that the public deserves to hear. I look at the agenda that's here and I see only two additional hirings in October for Camden High. So, I realize it's a time of transition. Charter schools that are, have been closed. There may have been more students than anticipated. The next five years are going to be transition and challenge. Let's be clear about that. So, we need to talk about how we're preparing to address these issues for the kids that are in the school. And so I asked the group here to recognize the concerns of the parents and the public for making sure that each child has the benefit of the best of education. I thank you for the efforts that are being made, but some of these issues need to be raised up and we need to talk about the elephant in the room and talk about those teachers and being available for the students. I thank you for your time.
Number 17, Ulysses Delgado.
Good evening, board, Mr. Superintendent, Ulysses Delgado, 3197, Cattle Street. Been a lot of good things happening here in East Camden. We planted two weeks ago 120 trees. Thanks for the mulch y'all gave us here. I enjoy myself. A lot of outsiders are coming in here helping us care for the city of Camden. We got our lights in the park. We're doing good things, safety for our kids, our kids don't have to get kidnapped. I'm a little concerned of what's going on with the special need kids in our district. The way they moving our kids. I'm talking to the principal and a couple of teachers and Wilson and outside and all this, chatting with them, getting to know my teachers. A lot of kids in our, and Wilson right there, they can't even read and write. And they're moving our kids to 11th grade, 12th grade, and they just want to kick them out. Why can't we come with some kind of program to learn really, to spend real good times with our needy, special need kids? You know, they've been flushing them around and all this stuff and they're kicking out. That's why Camden, you know, we're having all these drug activities and all that stuff. Out there, they ain't learning nothing in school because there's nobody paying no mind. And a lot of the parents in the city of Camden right here, they ain't paying no mind to their kids. I think some of these parents in the city of Camden should be locked up because they're not paying and focusing to their kids. And Willie Wilson, they're doing, the principal and Wilson, he's doing a great job in there, retaining to our kids in there, safety and all this stuff. And I want you people to have a nice day. Have a blessed one.
Number 18, R. Mongalisa.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Vice Chair and all the righteous people out there in the community that listen to this program. It's great to be black. With that, I am disturbed, Vice Chair and Chair, that I came here maybe five months ago. I've been out of the country a little bit, then I was down in DC with the head to state, talking in some workshops, human trafficking, environmental, racial issues. There's a lot to go over and a lot to talk about. I'm not going to be able to talk about everything. But I, this is to the board, to you too. I find it very appalling and insulting that I came here and brought my grievances. This is where you bring your grievances here, even spite what Mr. Paymore said, that people come here and run their mouths. This is where you bring your grievances and it's still constitutional right. And I got people that die for that right and I'm not going to let none of y'all trample on it. Now, I spoke to all you board people about Mr. Paymore's behavior of locking our children in those schools and putting those superintendents, not the security guard that put their hands on the children. That's what I brought to y'all. And it comes to my attention that y'all didn't even bring it up and discuss it. That's an insult to me. I've been out here fighting for this community and my people for a long time, a lot longer than anybody up there. And y'all didn't even discuss what I said. And then Mr. Paymore intimidated the principal and staff to stop those children from going out. And y'all didn't even discuss it. Just like this whole issue here about these here magnet schools becoming charming. That's another form of intimidation. Why would you give away your jewels? They worked hard to put those things in place. Why would you give those things away? And he's intimidating y'all with your jobs. I heard about it. It was told to me. He didn't write that letter of Mrs., what's the principal over there at that school? That was in the editorial, Brockington. He didn't write that letter. Any letter goes, I gotta go through him. He wrote the letter. He intimidated her and then also Jenkins. They don't live here. How you going to give away our schools? The best schools. How you going to do that? We ain't going to let you do that. Thursday night at 5 o'clock, we're going to talk about that. No squares or laugh. We're not going to let you do that. You're not going to do that. I know you on a mission, the superintendent for the governor, a bully. But I'm on a mission from God and I'm not going to let you do it. You understand what I'm saying? You intimidate people and tell them that they can keep their job if they sign. You took and ran a petition to the teachers to sign away the school before you took it to the parents.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Your time is up.
And I want to copy that then you said that it's a law for how we conduct ourselves. What about the conduct of the superintendent? Give me a copy of that you just read and you said that's the law. And you run Camden. And you come back here and with an illegal enterprise. All of y'all on the board, I'm disgusted with y'all. And y'all know me. And you didn't even discuss it. And I'll be back because I'm black.
Number 19. Clemese Brown.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Clemese Brown. I'm a resident here in Camden. I have a five-year-old that just entered kindergarten this year and she has an IEP. Her IEP has not been implemented correctly. She has not been receiving an appropriate education. At the beginning of the school year, September 2nd, she was not picked up by transportation. Since September 2nd, I have been transporting my child back and forth to school because the administration has some errors going on. Besides that, my child has been bullied on the bus. She's five years old. She's being put on the bus with other children who have special needs who are older than her, 11 and 12 years old. Not only that, she's being put in a classroom with only boys. This is my child's first year of kindergarten. She has not been welcomed like an ordinary kindergarten should have been welcomed. On top of that, I have addressed the issues to the principal. The principal has stated to me that in order to come to a solution, if I could agree to transport my child back and forth to school, which I have agreed to do, which I'm out of gas money and I've been doing it since because I care for my child's education. She told me that until then, she would try to change my child's bus route. Come to find out, that's not her place. Since then, I found out, I called the commissioner, the Camden County Education Commission, and I spoke to a supervisor. The supervisor has stated to me that the procedure is for the aides to write up infractions or things like that that the children are doing so it can bring it to their attention. That has not been done. Besides that, to this day, I am still transporting my child back and forth to school since September 2nd. I live in East Camden. My child has been placed in Yorkshire. Not only that, I have been called numerous of times to pick my child up from school because she has been running out the classroom because her behavioral plan has not been in the IEP. Now, I just want to say this because today I've got a call from the commission to tell me since I moved that my child will be placed back on the same bus. So, that means the problem has not been solved. I have a concern for my child. I'm afraid because it takes the bus driver from 2:45 till 4:30 to drop my child off. There's a very big concern. My child is only five years old. She's been exposed to behaviors that she doesn't know anything about. She knows about black and white and I don't know why. She knows about inappropriate behavior, touching and inappropriate manner. I don't know why. And since then, she has been wetting the bed. I have an appointment with neurology December 15th to address that. But since I have three minutes, I just want to say this. Legal confirmity, NJSA 18A 37-15. The Camden Board of Education, herein the board, is committed to enforcing federal and state laws and local policies that prohibit the harassment and intimidation and bullying of students and employees. The board has determined that a safe and civil environment in school is necessary for students to learn and achieve high academic standards. Harassment, intimidation, or bullying, like other disruptive or violent behaviors, is conduct that disrupts both a student's ability to learn and a school's ability to educate its students in a safe and disciplined environment. The board is... its students in a safe and disciplined environment. The Board is committed to providing all students and staff with a safe and civil school environment in which all members of the school administration facility, staff, and volunteers should be commended for demonstrating appropriate behavior. Treating others-
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Your time is up.
-with civil and respect, and refusing to tolerate harassment, intimidation, or bullying to that end. The Board enacts policies, regulations, and procedures that are designed to reduce and eliminate harassment. I have not seen no procedures presented. Intimidation and bullying, as well as processes and procedures to deal with incidents of bullying, intimidation, and harassment. Bullying and harassment of students by students, school employees, and volunteers who have direct contact with students would not be tolerated by the Board. It's, it's, it's not happening. Thank you.
At this time, we will entertain comments from our student reps, starting with Willa Wilson. Give your name and the school you're representing.
My name is Alexa Lopez. I'm from Willa Wilson High School. And as of Willa Wilson High School, we appreciate the new restrictions and discipline. For example, this has caused us to arise promptly to school on time. Children aren't skipping as much, and Wilson has become more intrigued with learning. It is also becoming more professional. One of our only problems right now is a new no hoodie policy. In Willa Wilson High School, notice, no students can wear hoodies under any circumstances. Due to children in the past years doing, doing things which causes problems, it no longer happens this year. But it, that is good. Which gets, but the problem is that it gets cold. Some children attending Willa Wilson High School are anemic, and not everyone has blazers, cardigans, or sweaters without hoodies. No, nor can some parents afford it at this time. If the, if the main problems of hoodies were due to the high rate of mischief, then the alternative would to be Willa Wilson could rein or raise or gain money to buy custom-made hoodies with our school logo, a first and or last name, and the year the student graduates. Now, to inform you about our upcoming event on November 17th, 8, 8 and 18th, at Willa Wilson High School, we are having a wax museum with 12 great Latinos who comprises our culture. For example, of the races, Honduran, Mexican, Puerto Rican, Guatemalan, and many more. 65% of Wilson is Latino. And all of us are tired of the stereotypes and false information. If you are, if you, if you could come, that would be great. I will also be attending this event. It is for parents and guardians of Willa Wilson High School and on the public.
Hello.
Hello, everyone. I'm Kadija Shubrick from Brim Medical Arts High School, and I am a 12th grader. I would first like to start off with saying that recently, the last meeting, we spoke to Aramark. I didn't express about the lunches last meeting, but we spoke, and Mr. Duran and I, we came to agreement. The next day, he sent Mr. Joel Hernandez to our school. We went over our menu, and it has been fixed to our liking. The next week, we had a new menu come in as he said that he would. So I'm very satisfied with that. We had a whole 360 change because before I didn't know what they were serving us. But now, we're all satisfied. Also, our medical terminology books are on their way. We have our physics books. And also, the Mandarin Chinese teacher position has been filled, and we are now looking for a business teacher, which we haven't interviewed for, but let's cross our hands that we get this teacher, and they're in well shape. Um, our school, we took a respect pledge last week, and we did well on that. But even though we respect each other year round, but we still had to take a week out of the year for respect. We also, this week, are having our violence awareness week, and we will have a guest speaker on Friday at 9:30. Her name is Charlene Maddox, and she is coming to the school to talk about violence and relationships and awareness. Also, we are having our senior homecoming. Um, we will update the website with time it is for our homecoming performance. I will want anyone and everyone to show up. You don't always have to be a parent of that school to support, because if, I know Nala's having the performance at Creative Arts, I'm gonna go support my dear friend Nala, and I'm gonna drag my mom along with me, like, we're gonna support Nala. So everyone, show up. We'll put it on the website at www.brim.org, so you can come and support the kids in your community. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Nala Johnson, and I'm from Creative Arts Morgan Village Academy. And today, um, I'd like to talk about, first, the locker rooms. Uh, we're not allowed to use the locker rooms. I mean, it's a minor issue. It's, it could be fixed, uh, 2.5. But, uh, we're not allowed to use the locker rooms because some of the middle school, they had bad conduct. And, I mean, it's, the locker rooms are no use. Like, we have to get, I get changed for gym every Tuesday and Thursday, and I, I feel like I have to walk all the way to the bathroom. Sometimes I'm late because I have to walk all the way to a different bathroom to get changed. And sometimes, my teacher is nice enough to let me change into, in her office where she has a bathroom. But I think it'll just be easier if we all had locker rooms, if we were all allowed to use locker rooms because we have locker rooms. And also, uh, our gym teacher, he was, we didn't have a gym teacher for a long time, and, uh, uh, since the beginning of the year, and he was replaced. I love him. And I didn't even ask for a gym teacher. I was fine with the substitute that we had. But thank you for getting that done, and I love our gym teacher. Um, also, my, although Creative Arts, uh, I think, I appreciate the Board for allowing Creative Arts to be so, so fortunate, and we have everything we need. But if up here needs something, then I feel like I'm missing it too. Or if my, one of the ladies, she talked about if, how her daughter was getting bullied, I feel like I'm getting bullied as well. I'm starting to get a little emotional. But I feel like I'm getting bullied as well. So I like, I mean, I just like these things to be taken care of. So, because we're, we all are one. It's not just, we're not individuals. So I just like everything to be handled and everything to be taken care of. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Ronnie Liu, and I'm a senior from Mehdi's High School. So upcoming events that I'm having, well, the school is having, is a breast cancer walk. We're starting from Mehdi's High School, and we'll walk into Cooper River Park from 9:30 till 11:45. So any parents or members from the advisory board would like to come out?
This Friday.
This Friday, for the, um, breast cancer walk.
From 9:30 to 11:30.
And, where? At Mehdi's High School. Okay. Um, so one of the projects I'm very, very looking forward to is my Halloween Hunter House fundraiser. We're trying to fundraise a trip to Puerto Rico as our senior trip. And I would like to thank the advisory board administration for donating trash bags to my project. And if any parents would like to come and support, it's gonna be on the 30th and the 31st from 7:00 to 10:00. Um, it's $2 to get in, and you have to bring your little toddlers or children. It is gonna be scary. Um, they don't ha, parents don't have to come in. You guys would like, I mean, you would want to, but it's okay. But that's it for today. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Gabriella Buckley. I'd just start this off on a positive note. I'd like to thank Aramark for the improvements they made in our cafeteria, and I'm excited for the renovations to come. Thank you, members of Aramark. Now, here goes the complaints. No, wait, another positive note. I like that you guys did the improvement on the metal detectors. I thank you for that. Does much safer. You don't have to frisk us anymore. But let's get to complaints. The crossing. I don't want to get hit. Uh, this is my last year of school, and I'm sick and tired of the Baird Park Boulevard that we don't have, we only have one crossing guard now. There's not a school crossing sign. And that, the drivers won't slow down. They're, they, they rather hit the children to get where they're going. I think that's unfair, because we go from the side of the doors. And if you want to get into history, that, you know how the blacks had to go through the back door. But, um, if you want to get into history. And also, I addressed this, this issue with the superintendent about the bus tickets. It's coming to the winter season, and I heard it's supposed to be the, one of the rash winter this year. So I don't think that kids who live two miles away from the school, which is a long walk in an urban city, to walk in the snow. And especially in the heat. And to address the heat issue, I'd like to have air conditioner put into the school, the central system. Camden High, I forgot to mention that. I'm the infamous Gabriella Buckley. And we need more special need teachers for, well, airs in math and English. I don't think that the special need students should be put aside. And also, the acceleration of the seniors, juniors, well, all grade levels that who can't read or write, or basically advance, that when they go to college, or the ones who don't believe they could go to college, because you guys don't make us believe that, you know, we're capable enough to go to college. Sorry. But, you know, they have to do remedial classes. Was it the 099 freshman classes? But I think you guys should prep the students of Camden High and other Camden City public schools, and teach them real-world activities, basically business, instead of having separate programs like JAG, um, JROTC to help them prep for real life. Because they don't have a support system at home. I know some kids are homeless, have no electricity, no food to eat. So why not give them that support system at Camden High and other Camden City schools? And also, I think we need more clubs, maybe a professionalism club, a multicultural club, a sewing club, and I talked about that. Yeah, and I'd like to address the fight that was on the news last night, and that, you know, the, the security guards and the principal is getting reprimanded. Let me tell you something to ones who saw the news. You are allowed to walk out of school. They cannot legally stop you. So I don't think that children, we should be reprimanded for a fight that happened outside of school grounds. It puts a bad va, well, there's already a negative connotation on Camden High because we're all thugs and early baby mothers. But, um, yeah. Don't reprimand the school or have propaganda on news to bring down the already negative connotation, as I said before, about Camden High. We aren't all fights and negative language and disrespect. There are a lot of intelligent students in Camden High. I'm one of them, that's why I'm here. And also, we'd like to have a trip to Peru in the spring. I mentioned that. So it set a precedent for the other upcoming classes to show them that there's a life outside of Camden and New Jersey. So I'd like to take Camden High to an international level. Thank you.
All right. I'll start with responding to the student advisory board members and their comments. I think a lot of you all are aware that we, we meet regularly with them, so most of these issues, we are in constant communication. And I want to thank them again for having raised so many other questions and concerns that have led to, I believe, very healthy dialogue for the school district. Uh, so, across the board, thanks for raising the various events, uh, the breast cancer walk and the, the event in, uh, in November with, uh, Willa Wilson. We are having constant communication with Willa Wilson students about the no hoodie policy. We understand some of the concerns, but I do think that there are some benefits there from a safety perspective. If an incident happens in a school building, uh, and a student's wearing a hoodie, you can't identify who did it. So that's the reason. It's a safety measure, and that's a conversation we'll continue to have with, with the students and their parents. Uh, Nala, I, we'll look into the locker room situation. We'll have a conversation with Dr. Cole Brockington to better understand, uh, the issues there. Uh, I, I appreciate your comment that we are all one. I certainly couldn't agree more. I've said many times here, no one person can do this alone. It's a community effort. And, you know, from my seat, I don't hear and see everything that happens in the school district. And, and, uh, whether it's you raising those concerns and other community members, this is always a great opportunity to raise them. Um, just go down the list here. Ms. Buckley, appreciate, uh, the, the number of items you raised here. Let me start with the, uh, the, the street traffic and safety issues. We recently, after a conversation with you and some concerns raised from Forest Tail Community, ECDC, uh, that Pine Street is, uh, is unsafe and hazardous. And, and I think a lot of you all know that there was a student who was struck by a car there last year. And, and so, we're, I think what we can do is, in those conversations, fold it all together with the crossing guard issue that you've raised to see maybe if we can put a sign there on the corner of Park and Baird, because I do know that traffic does move pretty briskly there. So there's a task force that's been created, and maybe we can potentially get you to, to join that task force. Uh, you raised a number of other issues, which we will continue to try to figure out. Uh, senior trips, uh, I think are a good idea. And, uh, it's pending funding availability, but we can also fundraise. And I like that all this, all the schools have a senior trip. Peru sounds like a mighty nice trip to be taking. Um, and we'll look into it and see, uh, and see what funding is available. On busing, I've, I've shared with Ms. Buckley that it's a matter of statute as far as the distance you live from a school building, uh, and what we're actually permitted to do. Uh, we will continue to advocate in Trenton for statutory changes. Uh, you mentioned a number of other items about programs for students and clubs. We're 100% supportive of any club you want to start. And I believe there are actually a lot of programs that exist that help our students who are overage and undercredited, which is what you were getting at. Unfortunately, not enough students are aware of those programs, and our job is to, to make them more aware, and that's where the guidance counselors come in. Onto public comments. I know a number of folks have left, but I'm still gonna, uh, go through this as quickly as I can. Uh, Ms. Gooden, you're still here. I am not personally privy to the details of the event that you called in question and, uh, the issues that fell through there. But, uh, Ms. Tia Morris from our team, I've asked her to reach out to you to sit down and talk through it. If you'd like me to join that conversation, see you nodding your head, I'd be happy to. Uh, but I, I, I'm not personally privy to those, to those details yet. Uh, Ms. Rosa Trent and many others raised the district calendar. So let me give you the full background here. The district calendar, uh, it was an expensive endeavor last year. And what we felt we could do is have a less glossy, uh, uh, you know, less expensive calendar and use the remainder of the funds for other initiatives to publicize events at our schools. We're gonna have a new, a district-wide newsletter that's gonna be coming out shortly that will help, again, promote activities. Clearly, there are concerns that, uh, we are not getting enough information out, and the calendar held a lot of that information. So what I will say here is that for the next board meeting, we'll come with a formal response as to whether or not, at this point in the school year, we can afford to, to print new calendars for this year in the middle of the year. Because if, if, if folks don't know about certain events, they're on the calendar that we have put out. They're on the website. Um, but if still that, that information is not getting out to families and community members, then we need to, we need to respond to that. So that's a matter of us looking at how much it would cost us, how quickly we can turn it around. But I do want to be sensitive to that, and we'll give you a formal response. But I can tell you that last year's calendar cost over $20,000. So it's not, it's not a cheap initiative for us. But we will get back to you on that. Mr. Barfield, um, you raised a number of issues around the Perkins Plan, Title I. You're right, you raised that at the last meeting. I apologize, we haven't gotten a hold of you. My impression I had was that our, our staff reached out to set up a meeting. Someone will be reaching out to you by the end of this week to set up that meeting, because we have compiled that information. We just got to share it with you. And it's not something I can share in a quick soundbite. You mentioned technology issues and textbook concerns. And I think that in that, in that meeting, we, I, I'd like to hear the specifics of, of those concerns. With technology, we have shifted away from the school-based technology coordinators and have a more centralized, uh, what we've informally called the geek squad, like Best Buy, that, uh, deploys out to schools to address issues. And if you feel some schools have more issues than other schools, then maybe we need to, uh, address that in a, in a more meaningful way. Uh, Ms. Ms. Thomas is still here. Uh, if you stick around after the meeting, uh, we'll pull up my calendar, and we'll get that meeting scheduled. And Mr. Barfield, if you'd like to join that meeting as well, you're certainly welcome. I assume Ms. Gooden, yes, feel free to join that meeting as well. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Mr. Farmer raised a number of items here. Security in high schools and the, uh, claim that they're understaffed. So we did not cut school security officers out of, uh, out of this year's budget. Camden High School, for example, is 15 security guards for approximately 750 students. If you compare that to other high schools with, uh, roughly 700, 800 students, on average, uh, high schools in, in urban school districts have three, at most, five or six security guards. We have 15. Uh, so I would argue we're not understaffed. I think it's more of an organizational matter that maybe there's a feeling we're understaffed, and it's something that we need to look into in some more detail. Uh, with safe corridors, uh, there was an incident last week, and we didn't deliberately hide that. It was, it was reported. You know, the incident, it was a targeted incident, and it's hard for safe corridors to always, uh, preempt or avoid a targeted, um, uh, criminal activity. And so, uh, I appreciate that Mr. Farmer raised that, uh, and we've certainly been working with, um, uh, law enforcement to address it. He also raised testing, and this has come up in a number of different settings, and I mentioned this earlier. Uh, the, the claim is that we're testing too much today. And the reality is, if you compare it to last year, we actually responded to feedback from teachers. And I want to be very clear about this. Our teachers told us, uh, consistently during the listening tour and, and, and the teacher talk events, the focus groups we had, that the EUAs, uh, these are the state, uh, I guess mandated is not the right word, but they were, uh, sent to us from the state, the end-of-unit assessments, EUAs. We're not working. And so, we worked with the state to get rid of them. And we've brought in new interim assessments that are taking up less instructional time. The most important point I can make to you all is, for these interim assessments, there are no stakes. We are not using them to evaluate teachers, and we are not grading them, uh, as it relates to- to students. What we're using the information for is to inform instruction and to differentiate instruction. So if one student is struggling with X, and another student is struggling with Y, those assessments help us address those issues. They do not have any stakes attached to them. Lastly, he mentioned the charter conversions, as did a number of other people, and I do want to be clear about this as well. This, in the case of Creative Arts Morgan Village, was an idea that pre-existed me and the state intervention. They, as in the school community, pulled together an application, and that application is only valid if the majority of the staff and the majority of the families agree to it. So I didn't have any role in that. Neither did the board members, and I know Mr. Mongolisa Davis isn't going to believe this, but I didn't also have any involvement with the op-ed that was published in the Courier Post. I read about it for the first time, just like everyone else here did. So those are organic conversations happening at the school level, and to the extent folks have any questions, we can relay them back to the two principals. But these are communities that are asking for a little more autonomy and flexibility to preserve the integrity of their programs, and whether that happens under the district or as an independent charter, for us, it's being driven by the community itself, and it's not in my place to stand in the way there. Ms. Carter, I'd be happy to talk to you after the meeting, but I can tell you that we haven't had a hand in that. Ms. Kirk also raised the school calendar, and I think we've addressed that. Mr. Frazier raised some very specific concerns. Textbooks at Creem School, so I mentioned earlier, we're scheduling a family meeting, and we'll address that issue during that family meeting. Secondly, he asked about more information about safe corridors, and we actually have the map that shows where the safe corridors are across the city, and we'd be happy to give him copies of that. You can actually find it in the solution center. It's also posted in the entranceway of all schools. He mentions a number of issues at Hatch. We have a meeting scheduled, 3 o'clock tomorrow at Hatch with the families that I'll be attending. A number of people asked for the latest vacancy count. I didn't include this in my presentation, because the issue has stabilized. So at the last board meeting, we were a little over 40 vacancies. We have 1,132 teaching positions, so 40 vacancies, approximately 3% of our positions, meaning 97% are filled. Today, we're at 29. So we're down 13. That puts us at close to 98% staffed, which is what you see in most school districts across the country. There are always some vacancies. As you saw earlier, a number of people retired. And the majority of those vacancies are in high-need staffing positions, special education, bilingual, STEM. And we are continuing to work hard to fill those positions. And he also mentioned concerns about class size. Where there are class sizes over the state limit, I've always asked people to let us know. I've heard that concern all the time, and as soon as I ask somebody, "Tell us where it is," I don't often hear the specifics of that complaint. Where we have class sizes that are too large, we will work to address it. It's not to say we haven't, but in the instances where we have, we have worked to address it. Ms. Horsey from, I mentioned Forest Hill. The library was converted to a cafeteria, and that was a conversation the principal had with the school community. They converted the multipurpose room to the cafeteria, so it's not as though there is not a cafeteria. Happy to share more information there offline. For Hatch, there were concerns noted about the time the principal's making for parent engagement. We're going to address that tomorrow in the family meeting. I'm almost done here. Ms. Ragsdale mentioned a number of different items, from paperwork to agenda books and substitutes, marking period. Those require much lengthier responses, and Ms. Ragsdale, I'd be happy to schedule a meeting with you as well. I can tell you, though, that your number is not blocked, and we are not avoiding your phone calls, so I'm not sure what happened there. I'll give you myself, for whatever reason, you can't get ahold of anyone, but we'll talk to those issues in more detail. Mr. Arnold Davis, yes, we will look into the matters at Creem. We are working to schedule the family meeting, so we can certainly raise it there. You mentioned discipline issues, and that I'm sure will come up. You mentioned Creem students not getting into the 9/11 museum. That's the first I heard about that, and that is concerning, if that's in fact how it played out, and we'll also look into that. As for your colorful commentary about death and purported suicides, I'm going to leave that one alone. Ms. Jocelyn, thank you for your comments. I certainly agree with you as far as the support we need to provide parents and students. The district is experiencing a lot of change, and I haven't been shy about expressing how change is hard and complicated, and the onus is on us to best communicate those changes, and we're going to continue to do that as best as we can. Mr. Delgado, your concerns about students with disabilities, and I think you were generally speaking about students who are overage and undercredited and falling behind. And there are a lot of programs out there, whether it's Youth Build, which our board president is a part of, to the Camelot Accelerator Program, which is specifically targeting students who are falling behind. They're out there, and again, I go back to the point that not all students are aware of those programs, and we do a much, much better job. And maybe it begins by sharing more information with you, so you can get that word out. But those programs are out there, and any of the board members want to add on to additional programs that you're aware of, but those are two notable ones. Mr. Davis, I think that we're just going to agree to disagree on a number of the concerns you raised. We didn't lock students in schools. There are many examples of students leaving during the school day to prove that we don't lock students in schools. And again, to your point about the charter conversions, again, it's an organic process. Ms. Brown, your concerns are very, I don't know if she's still around. Your concerns are very specific. Okay. Well, if she can join the Hatch meeting, maybe we can...
She is, she's going to be here tomorrow.
Okay, I think that's the best place to, because her questions are very, very specific, and we want to better understand the bullying that she, her student, is experiencing. Thank you. Well, at a minimum, we'll discuss it tomorrow, 3 o'clock. We don't have anything on the district website yet, as there aren't any immediate concerns for the Camden area, but it's a legitimate question you're raising, and we'll address it more specifically at the panel.
At this time, I will entertain a moment to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post my nay. The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
You've been watching the regular monthly meeting of the Camden Advisory Board of Education. Join us next month for the regular monthly meeting of the Camden Advisory Board of Education.